Good evening, everyone. I've had a long day. Welcome back and happy to have a large audience this evening. There are two items on the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of August 25th. And I'd like to point out to the committee that you have new minutes at your seat. We had forgotten that Mrs. Carroll was not present at the last meeting. And the second is a revised request for the high school field trip to Washington, D.C. And I believe we responded to all the questions that school committee had, which were good ones, around chaperones. And if you notice, it's a one to six student ratio.
Mr. Vale has just arrived, Kim. Thank you. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda to accept the regular session minutes of August 25th, 2010, and the out-of-state field trip to Washington, D.C. with the high school?
Oh, you want to do them both together?
Yes. Mr. Marchese.
I make a motion to approve the school committee minutes, meeting minutes of the regular school committee meeting on August 25th, 2010, and approve the out-of-state field trip to Washington, D.C. Tongue-twisted tonight.
We're all excited tonight. We're not used to it.
I know. It's the new moon.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes, second. Any questions or comments?
I would just say, thank you for addressing my question regarding the chaperone-to-student ratio.
It was a good question.
Thanks.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, Kim. Thank you. Okay. Our second item of business is the student school committee. And I'll have Mrs. Benton be introducing them for us.
Pleased to introduce our new school committee student representatives, John Keegan and Katie Aoki. And we're thrilled to have them here. And Katie's going to give the report this evening. Welcome to both of you.
Hello, I'm Catherine Aoki. This is my collaborator, John Keegan. We, together, will be the student representatives for the high school this year. And we want to thank you for including us. There are some items to report on concerning the beginning of the school year. The first week went smoothly, and sports and clubs are getting started very quickly. The volleyball team has a new coach this year and won its first game today. And the boys' varsity soccer team has a game today also. Club WHS, a community service club, has its first club meeting tomorrow. Rodeo Interact Club, of which John is president and I am a member, also has a meeting tomorrow. Peace Club, or People Everywhere Are Created Equal, has its first meeting Friday. The Drama Club is preparing for multiple productions this year and is planning a field trip to see Wicked in Boston on the 18th of this month. As the MIAA ambassador for my grade, I can help keep you updated on the developments of a new club this year, Captain's Council. It started the spring of last year. Band is preparing for Columbus Day Parade in Boston. And Strings is having fundraisers and preparing for a trip to Austria this spring. Generally, students are taking initiative to organize and are getting the year going. We'd like to thank you again.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you, Karen.
Do you have any questions or comments? I think we feel like we're back in the groove. This is so nice. And I would just like to mention that not every school committee, even though you're supposed to, has a student school committee. We thoroughly enjoy who takes such an interactive role with us. And we thoroughly enjoy having them. And we're looking forward to another really good year with student school committee members. So we thank you for giving the time, because we realize at night it's difficult to do. But we're so glad you're here. And then we let them leave anytime, as opposed to the new teachers who have to stay all night long. Only kidding. Okay, thank you so much. Next item of business, superintendents' report. Wonderful item that we do every year, the introduction of the new staff. Mrs. Benton.
It is a pleasure for me to introduce this new staff, Wilmington Public Schools. I just want to say that I want to commend the curriculum team leaders and the principals for doing an outstanding job in the hiring process this year. Just to give you an example, a third grade opening at Woburn Street on school spring, which is the way we use now to advertise for jobs, had 782 applicants for the position. The average number of applicants for all the positions in Wilmington, except for the assistant principal at the high school, was averaged around 500 resumes were sent in. So, in my opinion, you have the best and the brightest in this room this evening. And we were thrilled to welcome them to Wilmington two weeks ago at a new teacher orientation. And they have already started up and in the thick of things. And I hope they're as happy to be here as I am. So I'm going to go alphabetical order. If I call your name, would you please stand up? And hopefully, we will get you on TV. I'll tell you a little bit about them. Robert Odd. Robert Odd is a chemistry teacher at the high school. He actually came to us in March to finish out the year and did such a great job. We asked him back. He was a teaching assistant in Bedford before coming to Wilmington. And he has his Bachelor of Science from the University of Vermont. Welcome, Robert. Thank you. Carolyn Blazer. She's at the middle school, a .4 math teacher, and is also running the, working on the CARES program, running the CARES program at the middle school. Bachelor of Science from Northeastern University and a Master's of Ed from B.C. She formerly was a grade five and six teacher and technology teacher in Middleton, Massachusetts. So we're thrilled to have her. Jennifer Burgess, who's at Wildwood, is a .5 special ed teacher, with a Bachelor of Arts from University of Mass. in Amherst and a Master of Education from Leslie College. And she was a special ed teacher in the Saguas Public Schools. And unfortunately, got pink slip there, and we're thrilled that we were able to welcome her in Wilmington. Jessica Bush, West Intermediate, special ed teacher in the Pathways Classroom. Formerly, she was a family service coordinator at the May Institute, has a Bachelor of Science degree from Michigan State University. And Jessica was one of our last hires. And I was just so excited when she came through the door, because she was so full of energy. And I said to Mr. Shaw, there was a reason why we waited all summer long to fill that position, and we're thrilled to have her here.
Thank you.
Our next new teacher is a graduate of Wilmington High School and a Wilmington resident, Brian Kyra, who's at the middle school, teaching English Language Arts in sixth grade. Graduate Bachelor of Arts from Merrimack College. This is his first year teaching, and we're thrilled to have him with us. Welcome, Brian. Megan Coole. Megan Coole is at the high school. We placed Tom Strawn, who got a job closer to home. If you recall, he used to travel 84 miles each way to work. And his finding a position closer to the home actually allowed us to welcome Megan to the Business Technology Department. She has a Bachelor of Science from Providence College, a Master of Ed from Southern New Hampshire University. And she previously was Operations Associate for Rhodes Scholar. So she decided to leave the business world and enter teaching, and we're thrilled that she's here. Welcome, Megan. Judith Corwin, who's at the West Intermediate. Judith is a long-term substitute for grade five over at West. And previously, she has been an incredible substitute teacher for us. And the principals are always fighting over her when there was a long-term position. So we're thrilled that she's here. She has a Bachelor of Arts and a Master of Arts from Brandeis University. So welcome, Judith. Jacqueline DeLassandro at the high school, one of our mathematics teachers. This is her first teaching position, the Bachelor of Science in Mathematics from Northeastern University and a Master of Art in Teaching from Northeastern University. Welcome. Caitlin DiNicolà over at the Woburn Street is a grade one teacher. Before that, she was an ed assistant for the Wilmington Public Schools. She has a Bachelor of Arts from UMass Amherst and a Master's of Education from Merrimack College. Welcome. Zachary Jaggin Tenfoel is our new music teacher at the middle school. He was a sixth-grade general music teacher in Wildham before coming to us and actually did his student teaching in Lexington with a dear friend of mine, Jeff Leonard, who said, "When I called him, you have to hire him on the spot." So, and I respect Jeff Leonard's work. He has a Bachelor of Science from Ithaca College and a Master of Music Education from Boston University. And we're thrilled that he's in Wilmington. Welcome. This is a familiar face in a new position, Hope Doran, who was a science teacher at the middle school, is now our, one of the 12, the 10-month assistant principal at the middle school. Hope has a Bachelor of Science in Education from Framingham State and a Master's in Education from Framingham State. And we're thrilled to see one of our teachers being promoted from within to administrative position. Hope actually started the job before she even got, was getting paid for it, because she was so excited to be joining the administrative team. And for the past few years, she has co-chaired the Professional Development Committee, was very involved in that committee. And we're thrilled that she's taken on this new challenge. Thanks, Hope. Michelle McDonald, another new teacher at Woburn Street, first-grade teacher, was a substitute teacher for Wilmington last year. She has a Bachelor of Arts from the University of South Florida and a Master's of Education from Leslie College. Welcome, Michelle. Adam Mackey, middle school, grade six, science teacher. He was an aide in the Brookline Public Schools last year. He has a Bachelor of Arts from Bowdoin and a Master of Ed from Leslie University. And Adam actually was contacted to come in for an interview, I think, two days before he was to get married. So he, we let him get married, came in for an interview, then went on his honeymoon and came back, and we hired him. So he had a very busy summer. And we're glad he's here. Our new assistant principal at the high school, Dennis Mahoney. Dennis comes to us from the Littleton Public Schools, where he was head of the Science Department and was also interim assistant principal. He has a Bachelor of Science from UMass Amherst and a Master's in Public Administration from Suffolk University. And he's the dad of two beautiful children. They have pictures all over his office, and we're thrilled to have Dennis here. Another administrator that came in here like gangbusters, biking from Bedford, making us all, I know, because you put us to shame, but has really joined the team at the high school and already has made a difference. So welcome, Dennis.
Thank you.
Patrick Maun. Patrick was a long-term substitute math teacher at North Reading High School last year. He has a Bachelor of Arts from Amherst College and is our newest math teacher at the high school. Welcome, Patrick. Robin Mazarino, West Intermediate, is our new music teacher. This is her first year teaching. She comes to us from the University of Kansas with a Bachelor of Art in Music. Welcome, Robin. Patrick McInerney, the third teacher at Woburn Street School. He's grade two teacher. Patrick did some long-term substitute positions for us last year at Chushing and proved that he was indispensable. And they were all fighting to get a male in the elementary schools, so we're thrilled to have him. He has a Bachelor of Art from UMass Lowell and a Master's of Education from UMass Lowell. And I have to say that I commend the three Woburn Street elementary teachers, because if you recall, on the last day of school, that school was packed up. And the three of them came into the building, not, came into the school system, not being able to go visit their classroom, not knowing what the classroom layout was. And the three of them worked together, worked all summer long, doing all of these room plans. And as soon as they got the call from Mr. Sanderson, they were in there setting up, and their rooms looked beautiful. They've done a great job. And that's a hard way to stop. But thank you to all of them. Gary Nicholson. Gary is a special ed teacher in the Stripes Program at the middle school. Gary has an incredibly interesting background. He's a special education teacher in Westwood, special education teacher at the New England Center for Children, worked in United Arab, New England Center for Children, Abu Dhabi, United Arab, and in Southborough, Massachusetts. He has a Bachelor of Arts in Science from UMass Amherst and a Master of Science in Education from Simmons. And he ended up in Wilmington. So we're thrilled. Traveled around the world and ended up with us. Welcome. Another Wilmington graduate, Patrick O'Toole, is with us in the special education teacher for the alternative ed classroom. He was formerly a math teacher at Merrimack Special Ed Collaborative, and we're thrilled that we stole him. And I say that proudly. And he has a Bachelor of Business Administration from Salem State College. And we're glad to welcome you back to Wilmington. Annette Owen, long-term grade three substitute for Woburn Street School for the year. She was a long-term substitute teacher at West Elementary School in the Andover. And this is an example of a parent in the Andover Public Schools that was involved in her school's, her children's classrooms, and then decided that she was going to go back to school and change careers and become a teacher. And we benefit from it, and we're thrilled to have her. She has a Bachelor of Arts from the Fashion Institute of Technology in New York and a Master of Education in Leslie College. And we're thrilled she came over the border to Wilmington. Welcome. Kim Provincell, West Intermediate Special Ed Teacher. Previously, she was a language learning special education teacher at the Diamond Middle School in Lexington. She has a Bachelor of Arts from Elmira College and a Master of Science from Wheelock College. And we're thrilled that she's here. Bethany Smith, new school psychologist at West Intermediate. She was a school psychologist at the Village School in Marblehead last year. She has a Bachelor of Arts from Castleton State College, a Master of Science from Northeastern, and a CAGS from Northeastern University. Welcome, Bethany. Patrick Taylor, another Wilmington graduate and Wilmington resident, who was an ed assistant at the high school this past year. And now he is the grade seven social studies teacher at the middle school. He's a Bachelor of Science from Suffolk University and a Master's of Arts in Teaching from Salem State College. And although some children would say he got a demotion because he went to the middle school, we know that that's the perfect spot for Patrick right now. Welcome, Patrick. Amanda Tatro, .4 French teacher at the middle school. And this is her first year teaching, Bachelor of Arts in French from Merrimack College. Bonjour. And lastly, Jennifer Walker, chemistry teacher at the high school. Did she make it here? No? Okay. Now, did I miss anyone? Oh, here. So, we'd like to welcome the Wilmington Public Schools class of 2010, 2011.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments? You say, "Thank you." You're all sent. This is always one of the best things, because we get to know you, and we are so impressed with our administrative hirings that we can't tell you. So I will say it on behalf of the school committee, we are very impressed with you, and you haven't even started. So that's really good. I mean, you barely started. But we hope that you enjoy us as much as we're going to enjoy you. And we'd like to see you again at another school committee meeting at some point, for some reason. And you're always welcome. And thank you very, very much for coming. We appreciate, we know it's hard to come out at night, especially the beginning. So as Mrs. Benton just said, you're free to go.
We'll be back in Wilmington. Thank you all.
Pretty impressive group.
Thank you, Mrs. Benton. That was wonderful. Our next subject is the anti-bullying information.
Yeah, I have two more items under the superintendent's report. I included in your pack at the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed Model Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan. As you know, we did not wait for this to come out. We started work this, actually, the day that the law was signed was the day that I called Margie Daniels over at the Mills SEC Attorney's Office to ask if she would come speak on opening day. And I know many of you were there, and it was an incredible, incredible success. There were 522 staff members. This is the first year we included custodians, cafeteria workers, CARES workers, food service workers. And the response from the staff has been fabulous. They were thrilled with it. As part of the legislation, we have to do training of all staff, and it was a great way to begin the year. We also, this summer, put together templates for principals who really bear the brunt of this new law. It's the principal's responsibility to do the investigation. It's the principal's responsibility to make sure that there's staff training, there's curriculum. But as you know, in Wilmington, we work as a team, so we'll be doing this together. But we did put together templates that are being used in all the schools for, anytime there is a report of a bullying incident, there's a form for information on the accused, and there's a form for the victim. And we will keep these reports in notebooks that can travel with the grades. Because there's so many transitions in Wilmington, we want to make sure that information is passed on. Because, as you know, the definition of bullying is repetitive acts with intent to hurt. Not what all of us know and have grown up with, teasing incidents. These are planned repetitive acts that continue. And so we want to make sure that we have a record of all of this information that can go from school to school. We are charged with putting a committee together to put the plan together. We're putting a notice up on our website to ask for volunteers from the community. We want some parents on it. We've already started planning a community outreach program in October, where we do a whole week of activities. The Eric Tracy is going to get National Law Society students to do babysitting, so we can really inform parents. We also will be hopefully live streaming the workshops that we do to reach more parents in the community. I said this to the press the other day, and I'll repeat it this evening, this is not a school issue, this is a community issue. And we want to work together. And similar to Oprah Winfrey's, having people sign off on using cell phones, we want the whole community to sign off on bullying in the community and work together. So we'll be having different speakers during that week, and we will keep you all informed. In addition, we adopted, three years ago, second-step curriculum at the middle school, and have now brought that down into the intermediate levels. And that curriculum covers anti-bullying. So that curriculum will be used from K through eighth grade. As far as the high school, health teachers will include anti-bullying curriculum as part of their classes. And we will continue to keep you abreast of what is going on.
Could I just, you had asked about a possible school committee member?
Yes.
And if anyone else hasn't, I did hear from Mr. Hayes that he would like to be part of that, depending on when the meetings are held. So for now, I'd like to appoint Mr. Hayes. If that's, is anyone else? That would be good. So Mr. Hayes would be our designated person.
Appreciate that, Chairwoman Kane. Thanks.
Thank you.
Did I mention the bus drivers were part of the training? I don't know if I mentioned the bus drivers. And I just want to acknowledge North Reading Transportation for allowing the bus drivers to come to the training that day. Unfortunately, bullying happens most often on buses, at recess, in highways, not in classrooms. So that's why it's critical to have those employees working with us to help, you know, report anything that they see and be trained in how to handle the situation. So I will be keeping you abreast of our progress throughout the year, and you will have to vote on the final plan.
Thank you.
And lastly, as you know, last week, Governor Patrick made news allocating $204 million from the federal ed job fund to school districts across the Commonwealth, bringing state support for public schools to its highest level in history. Combination of state and federal dollars totaling $4.7 billion was used to ensure that all school districts receive more state aid. Now, it was very interesting how this was reported, because if you looked at the list in the paper, it reported Wilmington is receiving $36,000, and other surrounding communities receiving, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. The reality is, there were a couple of cuts, if you recall, last year in Chapter 70 funds. So what the governor did was used funds from stimulus grants, fund from the job fund grant this year, and added to equal, to bring everybody up to par, and then gave each community what amounts to the number of students times $25. So although it looks like Wilmington got less than everyone else, if you recall, we got a $512,000 stimulus grant last year, which pushed up our Chapter 70 funding. So we didn't, weren't as entitled to as much this year. All right, I'm going to turn to Paul and see if I explained it correctly. Did I get it all?
Yeah, that was right on. Essentially, almost every district in the state, at the end of the day, if you took their FY10, Chapter 70 in stimulus grant amount, and you increased it by $25 per pupil, that is what the Chapter 70 grant amount for FY11 becomes. In the way the money was used, it was used from various buckets, if you will. And the education job funds was used to cover some of the Chapter 70 cut that Joanne mentioned. There was a 4% cut, another 1.9% cut. And use the remainder of that per district to get the increase to be $25 per pupil. So the way it was sliced, some communities looked like they got a lot more money of the federal jobs funds. But in reality, every district, just about every district, at the end of the day, their Chapter 70 increased by $25 per pupil. That's essentially. So our jobs fund amount was $180,399. I think reported was $36,000. And the way that was arrived at, that was what was left, or what was needed, to make sure that we had a $25 per pupil increase, Chapter 70 to Chapter 70. That was the number that was reported. The true number we will be receiving is $180,000.
And the reality, the good news is, we can use these funds for FY12. And we all know that there is not going to be any more stimulus money coming our way. In fiscal 2012, I believe, I've said this four years ago, I think it's going to be the most difficult year we have. And so we will be using, reserving those funds to put towards next year's budget. Because I think it's going to be a tough year. Just as we did with our stimulus money, we reserved it, which we, by law, we can do for next year, so that we're not in a situation that unfortunately so many school systems are going to be in, of really, really having to make drastic, drastic cuts next year.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Marchese.
Superintendent, actually, Mr. Jerry probably answered us. Last time we met, there was some other funding that, the amount's about $60,000 that we weren't entitled to for something else that happened, or, I don't know exactly what that was. So I just want to kind of...
That was the Race to the Top, which was the grants the state of Massachusetts applied to the federal government for the Race to the Top grant. Now, this is, was the second time Massachusetts applied for this grant. If you recall, the first time around, in order to be eligible, you had to have your Teachers Association, your school committee, and your superintendent sign on. First time around, the association, school committee, and superintendent signed on. If we, that, there were only two grants were awarded the first time around, and then they did, opened up a second round. In June, unfortunately, our Teachers Association voted not to go along. So we, even though the school committee and superintendent still were in favor of participating, we were ineligible. So we join about one-third of the public schools in Massachusetts that are not participating in Race to the Top. If we had participated in Race to the Top, we would have received $60,000 over four years in funding. So that's what we have given up.
Because I think the confusion lies is, even I thought, I thought this $204 million was part of that Race to the Top and that second application, and that's why we got the $204 million.
No, two separate, two separate grants. Glad you asked the question.
Mr. Vale.
Chairwoman Kane, maybe a question for Mrs. Benton, or through her to Mr. Rogiro. The, so the incremental $25 per student assistance at this point, is that, I guess there's never any promises, but is that anticipated to be a continuous bump up in annual assistance? Or is that just sort of a one-time, one-time thing that, what's the plan with that?
Yeah, I mean, the foundation aid is based on, you know, it's a pretty complicated formula, but it's, you know, property, worth of property, income, and then how much the district can contribute to a total foundation budget, number of pupils times some dollar amount per child in different categories. And that number can fluctuate a little, depending on enrollment, in whether the district or the town has to contribute. So there's an aid number that's calculated. For this year, that aid number was basically, as compared to the previous year, bumped up $25. I don't think there's a guarantee going forward that'll continue to increase. I think this was kind of a, with the funds they had in the, you know, the fiscal climate that continues, this was a way to really keep teachers in the classroom. And the education jobs fund money is specifically for salary benefits. It's not to be used for anything else but that.
So now, we're, when you, when you look at the total pot that we've just sort of got above and beyond what's already been budgeted and approved for this year, $180,000 or so, that'll be reserved, I guess, for FY12. So are those funds that we essentially control? I mean, are they in an interest-bearing account, or?
No.
Does the interest go to the town, to the state, to somebody, not us, or us?
No, if only, there's state cash management laws, if you will. So we can't, we have to apply for this money. And then I actually have to draw money down monthly. If we don't anticipate using funds, we, I can't draw the money back. There's penalties involved, so it stays with the state. Even with a normal grant, you know, say it's a $100,000 grant, I might, I
Even with a normal grant, you know, say it's a $100,000 grant, I might, I have, I can't, we don't get $100,000 upfront. I might ask for $10,000 per month to cover the expenses. So it's kind of a, you know, you get them, you take the money, and then you pay your expenses type thing. So we do not receive the money. We can't put it anywhere. So the state, it stays with the state.
So I guess, but does, but will accrue any interest at all between now and next year?
No, not for us.
Not for us. In our little segregated account, even though we can't touch it?
No. We don't, we do not have access.
It's called going into the general fund.
I also read in the, in the report that something like $3.5 million of the assistance was being siphoned off for oversight or administration? Any insights as to, you know, how many man-years of oversight and assistance that is to do some accounting work at the state?
And that's all at the DESE, not at the local level. No administrative funding is allowed through that grant.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just, I'm surprised that it seemed like, I sort of think about the accounting and everything else that goes on, what costs $3.5 million?
Yeah, I can't speak, I don't know. But I know that any of the, all of the stimulus money that we receive, there are tremendous reporting requirements of each school district, and all that is submitted to the DESE, who then has to compile it, and then it goes to various levels of the state government, and ultimately to the federal government. You know, Joanne knows, I mean, I spend, I don't know how much time putting all these various reports together. Basically, it's tracking every penny you spent off of these grants. And we're, it's kind of, you know, compared to some districts, it's not as bad. So all that information then gets, goes to the state, who then has to do whatever they do to massage it, and then it goes to another level of state government. So what that money is for, I don't know, but I, the reporting requirements are quite extensive, all the way down to the local level, and then, you know, they have to put everything together.
Okay, Mr. Marchese?
While I think it's smart to save the money for next year if we don't need it now, because we have a good budget and it's solid and sound, is there any fear that if this money's sitting as a surplus next year, that the state may come back and say, okay, Wilmington, you didn't spend your 95, so we're going to cut your Chapter 70 by 95 so you're even for this year because you didn't use the money last year? Even though it may look like it's a surplus? Is there any chance of that, or have you thought about it?
I was on a conference call a couple weeks ago, and it was confusing to everyone on the call, as well as the DESE, but they had said the money is Wilmington's. It's all the, each district, it's their money, so they're, I mean, is there a chance? I guess there's a chance, like, in anything, but they said that money is yours. If you don't spend it this fiscal year, it's the FU next fiscal year. That's what we were told on the conference call, anyway.
Yeah, granted, we're allowed to spend it next year, but there's no word saying that we're not going to cut your Chapter 70 funds by 95 because we have this surplus federal money right there.
That formula, they can't touch.
I don't know. You don't know?
No, I mean, they can't touch that formula. So that would be, I mean, they could say no, but if you look at all the surrounding communities, unless the community was starting off the year with not enough teachers and, you know, and not enough funds, most school districts are trying to hold on to the money for FY-12 because the association's even saying it. There's going to be nothing next year extra, so if you can hold on to it for the FY-12, hold on to it. We'll see.
We're going to keep positive, feel positively. Mr. Hayes?
To Superintendent Benton and to Paul, I guess I have a request. When it comes time to propose your FY-12 budget, you know, early next year, could you let us know, if this is possible, how many jobs were actually saved by this $180,000? I'd just be curious to know the number.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And we'll also, in the proposed FY-12 budget, we'll show you on the grant section what we are proposing to spend-
Sure.
-these funds on.
Thank you.
Great. Any other comments? We are, we still have physical, but-
Yeah.
Mr. Marchese?
Just based on Mr. Hayes' comment, when you say how many jobs are saved, right now, there are no jobs in danger right now for, you know, we're not looking at layoffs or anything. I don't want anybody out there thinking that we're looking to cut people or anything like that. So I just want to-
Sure.
-careful in your statement, saying how many jobs are saved, because nobody's in danger right now.
Right.
So, yeah, it's, go ahead.
But I think what you are asking is, if we don't have the $180,000 when we're putting together the FY-12 budget, how many positions will be lost?
That's, yes.
Yeah. And that's a good question, too.
But, I mean, again, that all falls back to my original question, you know, are they going to cut us anything, you know, if this money's sitting out there, so?
I think the problem here is not that they're going to cut us, it's that there's not going to be the same-
Grants.
The same grants aren't going to be available.
Yep.
And so if you've used those grants for something that's going to need, I keep thinking of the kindergarten grant in the sense, that kindergarten grant, eventually, if it goes away, we need to fund it. So I think they're saying next year, not the kindergarten grant, but some other grants that have been one or two-time grants, they are not going to be there next year. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we think, so. Okay, great. Thank you, Mrs. Benton. All right. Next item of business, all business, vote on the middle school and high school handbooks.
Just want to acknowledge Dr. Quick's reading of the handbook and picking up on the language around vaccinations and school-aged children, and we have corrected that on the website. And I have not heard any other school committee member concerns this past week, so I recommend that you approve the 2010-11 middle school and high school handbooks for the Wilmington Public Schools.
Could we have, we'll do the motion first, a motion to approve the 2010-2011 middle school and high school handbooks for the Wilmington Public Schools. Mr. Hayes?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the 2010-2011 middle school and high school handbooks for the Wilmington Public Schools.
Do we have a second? Mr. Marchese? Okay, any questions or comments? Mr. Hayes?
Again, just want to thank Principal McMenamin and Tracy for answering many of my questions via email and in person.
Thank you. Okay, everyone else, any other, all those in favor of approving the handbooks? Unanimous, thank you. All right. Our next vote is on the district professional development plan.
At the last meeting, I presented you with the 2010-2011 Wilmington Professional Development Plan, and you will need to vote approval of it this meet, at this meeting.
Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the 2010-2011 Wilmington Professional Development Plan. Mr. Higgins?
I move to approve the 2010-2011 Wilmington Professional Development Plan.
And we have a second. Mr. Marchese? Okay, any questions or comments on that? Mr. Hayes?
I feel like I was obligated with all my questions, just to thank Superintendent Benton again for answering all of them.
Any other? I think it's, I think it's a wonderful plan, and our professionals are very lucky to have this group that puts together this plan for them that seems to hit everybody's needs, so I think-
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor? Unanimous, thanks, Ken.
And the last all business is my goals for 2010-2011.
I would entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's goals for 2010-2011 school year. Mr. Marchese?
Make a motion to approve the superintendent's goals for the 2010-2011 school year.
And we have a second, Mr. Higgins? Any questions or comments? Mr. Marchese?
Superintendent Benton, I just want to say thank you for giving us your goals, and they're ambitious, and I hope you achieve every single one.
Thank you.
I'd just like to remind the public that the four main goals are the high school project, the new anti-bullying policy, a new technology goal, as well as creating a multi-year strategic plan. So as Mr. Marchese said, that's quite an undertaking aggressive, and we know it'll be finished. We have no doubt.
Thank you.
It will be done next spring. Thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, Ken. Thank you. Thank you for your goals, Mrs. Benton. Right, new business. The first item, school committee representative for nurses' negotiation team? Mrs. Benton?
We, we have already, it just seems like we settled the nurses' contract two weeks ago. We did. But it's time to, they have already put in a request to begin negotiations on their new contract. Mr. Rogiro is requesting two school committee members to be on the team.
Now, I have heard from Mr. Hayes and Dr. Quick. Does anybody else, is anyone liking the idea to be on the negotiating team?
See, I don't know any better.
Get your feet wet here at negotiations. So I'd like to appoint Mr. Hayes and Dr. Quick. If, in fact, Dr. Quick finds that it's more, she's willing to do it, but if, in fact, something comes up, then I'll take Dr. Quick's place. So for now, it'll be Mr. Hayes and Dr. Quick. Okay, thank you. Wilmington's voting delegate on the MASC annual business meeting.
Mr. Hayes has been able to arrange his schedule to attend the MASC, MASSS, during conference from November 30-6. And we are, I'm recommending that he be the voting delegate for the 2010 MASC conference, and this year we promise to give you guidelines on how to vote.
If not, I'll call Mr. Veal.
That's a good one. Okay. And then I would be the alternate delegate, I'll be the alternate delegate.
Mrs. Kane will be the alternate.
So could we take a motion to hire Mr. Hayes? Do we need a motion, or just appoint him? Yeah. We'll designate Mr. Hayes as our delegate.
You must vote it.
Yeah.
MASC replies that you vote.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay. Could I have a motion to nominate Mr., to vote Mr. Hayes as our annual delegate? Mr. Marchese?
Make a motion. I don't know why you're doing it, Mr. Hayes, but to nominate Mr. Hayes as our annual delegate.
Do we have a second? Mr. Higgins? This is second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
God bless him.
He's going to have fun.
Wish me good luck on minutes.
It's fun, it's very, it's really-
Better than as fun as you say it is, but-
When he gets up to talk, I'm going to have to pull on his, Mr. Veal.
With all due respect, it wasn't really, it wasn't a chore.
Mr. Veal, oh, good.
No, it was interesting.
Interesting.
I just found, and I guess we'll see the motions, at some point, they'll be, they'll come out and they'll be distributed.
Yes.
You know, either, they were very specific and didn't apply to Wilmington, because it had to do with large urban school districts and issues that, you know, didn't affect us, or it was sort of like mom and apple pie kind of things, which is hard to anyone to dispute. And I, off the top of my head, I just remember it's like, you know, moved that, the Association of School Super committees, the school committees petitioned the legislature to adequately fund public schools. You know, and I was like, yeah, sure, who's in, we're all in favor of that, right? So I think what we're going to see, and we'll see what these motions come up with, is that they're going to fall into one of those, one of those two camps. And, but, I mean, you're interesting, it's sort of the official business of this association, how it gets done, and obviously, each committee has to have one representative to cast a committee's vote.
Right.
And-
Wait a minute. Mr. Hayes, you could answer, and then Mr. Marchese.
And the other reason I'm going, aside from representing the school committee, is I do need eight hours of training before, before, I guess, my first year anniversary on the board. So I'll also be receiving that while I'm down there.
Good. Mr. Marchese?
And just to clarify on my comments, I have no issues with the MASC, the comments and all that. You've taken a lot on your plate tonight, so that's the only reason why, is my comment, because you've taken a lot, and I thank you for everything that you're doing.
Well, thank you, Mr. Marchese.
Exuberance of you, I say.
They ignorance you?
Ignorance, exuberance. I said, thank you, Mr. Hayes, we're thrilled.
Thank you.
Okay. And later, at a future meeting in October, probably as soon as we get them, we'll put it on the agenda, and we'll go over them. Delegations? No, thank you. Board members' questions and comments tonight? Kathleen, we get to start on your side.
I just want to say best of luck of all the new teachers, and congratulations. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Carol. Okay, Mr. Hayes?
So I have a comment tonight, no questions, just a comment. I recently read an interesting article in the Boston Globe regarding one of our neighboring school districts, Burlington. Quote, "Burlington will become the second school in the state to implement a one-to-one plan in which every student has a laptop computer. The Beverly School District plans to go one-to-one in fall 2011, and Burlington High School's Patrick Larkin told his school committee he would like Burlington to be on the same timeline." Quote, "We love to be that kind of leader in our part of Massachusetts. If it can't be done in Burlington, it can't be done anywhere." Larkin noted the savings on textbooks and supplies that would come from students carrying laptops instead of book bags, though he said he is aware of the costs of the new program. Funding options would include having students purchase computers, computer leasing, or having the district provide the computers to the students. He added that there could be bulk buying and group rates and financial assistance for students who needed it. Funding details and what kind of computers Burlington would use will be discussed further by a newly formed committee. So after reading that, I thought, wow, Burlington's doing this, why not Wilmington at least explore the possibility? So I've just begun researching the topic, but all the research I've seen suggests that when properly implemented, one-to-one classrooms lead to higher student achievement and increased student engagement. So I'd suggest that our professionals, the administration, and the district's technology task force continue monitoring other school districts' one-to-one initiatives, and seriously explore the feasibility of one day making Wilmington High a one-to-one school.
Wow. Mrs. Benton?
Can I comment? Because we had an offline conversation about this, and I'm very excited that he picked up on it. Pat Larkin, the principal at Burlington High, actually hosted a group of principals this summer, and Eric and Dennis went to all of the sessions to brainstorm and talk about this. You will be hearing about a capital project this year for the FY-12 budget. We need to put in wires lines in order to be able to have the capacity to have wireless schools, and we're going to be working with the town side to hopefully do a joint capital project. And then hopefully, with the new, or renovated, or addition to the high school, we can come up with some creative ideas around student computers.
That reminds me of a question you just brought to mind for me. With the new high school, if some of these innovative ideas come along, are there grants that would be available to us at this point?
No, it's actually included in the cost.
Oh.
That the technology will be included in the high school project.
Oh, wow, okay.
So it's perfect timing.
This is sounding better, perfect timing.
Perfect timing.
Yes, excellent. Okay, thank you, is that it, Mr. Hayes?
That'll be it for tonight, thank you.
That was good for tonight, thank you. Mr. Higgins?
Yeah, I'm all excited about that now, but, thanks. I'd just like to welcome everyone back to the new school year and new teachers, and the schools, of course, look great again, so thank you to the Billings Department, did another, you know, a great job again over the summer, getting everything all cleaned up and buffed up and painted and repaired, and everything's working smooth and looking great. And that's about it, just welcome back, everybody, enjoy the year.
Sweet.
Oh, School Building Committee, first meeting is next Wednesday night, right here. Very excited for that. There's, how many on the panel?
There's 17.
17.
And it is a public meeting, so people can come.
Come on down. Yeah, I got tapped on the shoulder by a couple in the supermarket that are on the committee as well, so it's exciting. Exciting times to begin.
High school building meeting. The 15th, 7 o'clock in this room.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Mr. Marchese?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate all our teachers and administrators for starting off the school year great, without a hitch, so very happy about that. Welcome again to all the new teachers that we met tonight, welcome to Wilmington, and I hope you have a long and prosperous career here. It's a great community, it's a great school system. And from all the traffic outside tonight with all the cars parked out, it's my understanding that soccer and volleyball started tonight, so good luck to the Wildcats. It's, you know, I hope we have a good, successful fall season in sports. And I guess high school starts this Friday night in Melrose, so pack up your gear and head to Melrose and support your local football team, so I hope to see everybody there, and I'll be there myself. And seniors, I'll leave you guys alone tonight, because the clock is ticking, so enjoy, thank you.
I have to laugh, Mr. Marchese, that if the seniors are home watching this, be interested in who they are. I'm sorry.
I like this single one.
I was one of them in my time. I'll admit it.
Well, then that's excellent, because we can have us in the end. Well, then, that's excellent, because we can have this in the end. Sure, we'll recruit school community members.
There's probably a few of them out there.
That'll be great.
That's right, bring them over once.
Thank you. Okay, I can't even get my family to watch these.
I don't watch them now that I'm on camera.
My sister's here from Texas, and she said, no, I'm not watching. Sorry. Mr. Vale?
I just wanted to, again, welcome all the new teachers. It's a pleasure seeing you and meeting you, and welcome to Wilmington. I'd just like to thank everyone on the committee and in the administration for doing, I think, a great job on the new student handbooks, including specifically, I think it's very, very handy up front to have that sort of order of, the chain of command, the chain of communications, if you have an issue. I think it's probably very helpful for everyone in the district to have that. And I want to wish Mrs. Benton very good skill on completing all of the goals and the superintendent's goals, and we look forward to successful completion of that.
Thank you. And I'd like to say, for me, it's in the eyes of the children. There are eight children from kindergarten through fifth grade who get on the bus stop at the end of my road, and it is, it has been unbelievable, it's been the best back-to-school year, they are loving the bus, they are supporting each other, they are coming home with a smile on their face every day. My grandson is like, I did my homework! Last year wasn't quite that way in first grade, but second grade, he's loving the homework. And the parents are so excited and so supportive, and it's just, that's what, that's what it's all about, how these kids are responding to school. And thank you to everybody who helps them to respond in a very positive way, it's really important. Okay, thank you. Other reports, we don't have that tonight, correspondence, not tonight, future meeting dates and agenda items, September 22nd.
And that will, and that evening, we will present the results of the NEA SNC report visit last March. I will get the reports out to you shortly, to give you a chance to go through them, and we would, Mr. Tracy and I would appreciate it if you could get questions to us in writing ahead of time, but he will do a presentation that evening.
Do you need previews or anything?
Can't say anything.
It's interesting, there's always a time limit on when we can let information out.
There's no surprises, I'll tell you that, there's no surprises, I'm pleased with it.
Oh, good.
Will we have it next week?
Yeah, you'll have it maybe Friday.
Excellent.
Yeah. I just need to pass something out to the committee.
Oh, please.
On Friday, the Department of Ed, Elementary and Secretary Ed will be announcing adequate yearly progress, and I just wanted to give you a private preview. This is embargoed until Friday, so if you could take one of these, I'd appreciate it. And we'll talk about it on the 22nd.
We'll have a full time on the 22nd, if, as always, if you have other agenda items, please let us know. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.